Town council meeting for Thursday, February 8th. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I imagine we're the last meeting we have. Okay, announcements. Obviously, I don't have my act together tonight. Okay. The Merrimack Town Council would like to offer our condolences to the family and friends of James McSweeney, who passed away on Friday, February 2nd. Jim served as Merrimack's first town manager from 1978 to 1986, as well as worked as the business manager superintendent for the Merrimack Village District. Jim was a kind and caring person that will be sorely missed. Rest in peace. Could I have a moment of silence, please? Thank you very much. Okay, last day to file petition bonds for those over $100,000 is tomorrow, February 9th. Last date to file petition warrant articles is Tuesday, February 13th. There is a special meeting here in the Matthew Thornton Room next Thursday, February 15th at 7:00 PM. Then there is a regular council meeting on Thursday, February 22nd, again here at the Matthew Thornton Room at 7:00 PM. Another regular meeting on Thursday, March 8th, again 7:00 PM in this room. Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The 2018 dog licenses are now available at the town clerk's office. Dog licenses are due by April 30th. The Parks and Recreation Department invites you to join them on Saturday, February 24th, from 12 to 3:00 PM for the 26th Annual Winter Carnival at Wasserman Park. It was looking like we weren't going to have snow for it, but I guess we got snow for it this year. This is a great free event and will be packed with an afternoon of fun and exciting indoor and outdoor games, activities, snow sports, food, and more for the whole family. For more information, please visit our website at www.merrimackparks, with an S, N-R-E-C, dot org. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Can I ask a question, Madam Chair?
Absolutely. Bill?
I received a communication this afternoon from Becky Thompson stating that the meeting on the 15th was postponed.
Previous meeting. We were going to have a non-meeting?
So the non-meeting?
Correct.
Okay, so we're still meeting, but no, okay.
Correct.
Thank you for the clarification.
That's all right. Yeah, there's a, it was a legal counsel.
Right.
And that person is being replaced. We don't know who yet, so we have to wait until we know. Okay, PFOA update. Bill or Peter?
I'm going to wait till our Representative Christensen is here. I hope he'll speak during state comments. And then obviously, under new business item number two, that's really what I would be presenting.
Okay. Do you want to, you did want to, I believe, Representative Christensen, this was the time that you wanted to speak to PFOA? And I did have a couple of questions about some legislation somewhat related to what's coming up. But while he's here. Thank you very much.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Chris Christensen, State Representative representing Hillsborough District 21, which is the town of Merrimack. Pleased to be here. You know, we do have a couple of things going on. I'm sure you're familiar with House Bill 485, which we passed in January, went on to the Senate. They haven't done anything with it yet. They're all still working on, we refer to as early bills, which are the ones that have to go to a second committee. And that was for the House today was the deadline for that. One of the bills that we passed today in the House, well received, it was just a voice vote, no dissenting arguments, was House Bill 1101, which is sponsored, prime sponsors Dick Hinch, Dick Barry, myself, Bob LaRue, and then some others from Bedford and Lynchfield. It's very similar in many respects to 485, but it specifically adds four groups of PFCs that are to be addressed instead of the more generic approach that 485 took. So we're just trying to be a little bit more specific and get DES headed in that direction.
Quick question.
Sure.
Maybe I should wait because you'll clarify it. I've done a little bit of research in preparation for a future discussion this evening. And I believe 1101 has to do with air emissions. Is that the one that provides ability for DES to do air emission analysis?
Yes. Similar language is in 485.
Okay, that, so there it is in. But 485 is pretty much emerging contaminants in drinking water, but it also has to do with air emissions as well?
Right.
Okay, gotcha. I didn't realize that.
The hangup we have on some of this stuff, and it's coming up in other bills as well, is what's an emerging contaminant? Does it have to be around for three years before it's really a contaminant? Or is only for the first two weeks that it's emerging? It's undefined. So that's why we went in the direction of the PFCs specifically and worked closely with DES on that and some other bills related. So I think it's a good bill. We'll see what happens as they all move through the system.
Now, my understanding is also 485 enables the hiring of a toxicologist as well as a human health risk assessor?
Researcher, yep. That's in both bills. Really, the two bills are almost identical.
Okay.
Except we added that stuff about the four specific groups of PFCs.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, let me ask you, let me have you finish. I don't want to interrupt you anymore. You finish whatever else you want to say.
That was pretty much it.
Okay.
The one we passed today is going to Science and Technology, which is Dick Barry's committee. And they'll review it, but it's basically the same language on the air emissions and so forth that they did last year.
And I know in the past, part of the problem has been there hasn't been any fiscal impact that was associated with the legislation. Both of these have had that.
Yes, the fiscal impact is really about $130,000 to hire the toxicologist and the researcher.
Right.
But we're not, at this point, legislating anything that has a direct fiscal impact on either the state or the towns. That was one of the problems with the original version of House Bill 485. When we initially passed it, it set standards, but we didn't have any fiscal information when we got that in the Senate, in the Finance Committee. Then we went back and looked at things and reworked the bill to fit something that would actually work. And then that approach of setting rules, having Environmental Services set rules for standards has been carried through. So we did that on 1101 today. We also had another bill on arsenic. Where the bill came in with literally impossible standards. And we said, you know what? This isn't going to work. There was an amendment to try and change it to a specific number. And no, because you can't work the plans, you can't do waivers. But in rules, they have the force of law. But because it's a rule, DES has a chance to work with somebody, whether it's a town or a company or whatever, to make things work. As opposed to just saying, okay, here's the standard, you're going to have to close your shop now.
Okay, so they don't address remediation or consequences. If a entity, DES can write a standard. It doesn't address if the community or an entity goes beyond the standard. It doesn't speak to that, is that correct?
Not this particular bill.
Correct, okay.
If you are in violation, you have a, something that needs remediation. You have a spill or something else, then you're responsible for it. And there are a variety of, depends upon the type of activity, but there's a variety of enforcement procedures, cleanups, fines, remediation, and basically fines.
Is that in the bill or is that having to do with procedure?
Already in rules now.
Okay. Let me ask you a question. I honestly don't know the answer. That's why I'm asking you. There is this proposed Senate Bill 309, which has to do with surface water, ambient groundwater, and drinking water. And it talks about the establishment of a toxicologist, but it doesn't talk about the researcher. Now, how, and there was testimony. Three were in favor and three were against. And two of the against or in opposition was DES. That's a whole separate issue. But what happens if both bills pass? Because they seem to be in conflict with each other. What happens then?
Well, there's a variety of complicated options. If it passes the Senate. Then it comes to us, probably come to my committee. We would take a look at it. If we liked it, we might do something with it. It might go to Finance or Science and Technology, some other. But we would also be looking at our own bills, 485 and 1101. And if they are overlapping, we would either amend them to match or more likely, put it on hold and let the other bills go forward. Because there's no reason to have two or three or four bills all doing the same thing. So sometimes there's a bill that has something unique in it that we like. You can pull it out and attach it to another bill. So there's only, in the end, there's only one bill.
Okay, okay. Does anybody, we'll discuss this more into 309, but
I guess
Questions we should take advantage of.
But I guess there was, so what you're saying is, is that, oh, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
No, I'm saying, yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I forgot to ask you. So they wouldn't create a committee of conferences to look at three, let's suppose, you know, the Senate bill passes the Senate, you've got two bills that pass the House. You know, both the House and the Senate pass the identical bills, it wouldn't go to a committee of conferences where they'd hash it out for one super piece of legislation?
Indirectly, that can, the extra stuff can be added in the committee of conference. So essentially, when you go to a committee of conference, the Senate has passed a bill.
Okay.
That's their position. Could be the same bill, but they may be amended it. So that is the Senate position. The bill, as it came out of the House, is their position. Could be the same bill, could be a couple of other bills that are the same subject matter. And so the respective body is supposed to defend its own position. But certainly, we know the reason for being there is to negotiate something that's going to work for everybody.
The quandary I have is, I place this on the agenda tonight because it's something that I feel having a set of standards in the state of New Hampshire, coming from Department of Environmental Services, I think, is very critical as it goes to, like, the chairman alluded to ambient water quality, groundwater quality, and, you know, obviously, stormwater quality. My concern is potentially, I'm asking my colleagues tonight to send a letter to the Senate that might not have any particular effect with the Senate and conversely, with members such as yourself in the House, if there are competing pieces of legislation. I guess, is it still worth?
Which is what we can discuss.
Which is what we can discuss later on. I just, I would, I would appreciate some institutional perspective from the representative as to, not that I would ask him to guide us how we would proceed, but to give us some perspective as to how a letter such as ours might be handled up in Concord.
Yeah, that's why I thought it, when I saw that you were here, and I went, oh, I know you're involved. So I said, I'm going to pick your brain while you're here.
Sure.
Unexpectedly.
To Councilman Boyd's question. I think it's always a good idea to, as a body, communicate your position on almost anything that's important to you. Otherwise, nobody knows it's important to you.
Okay.
Timing is different in terms of perhaps who you write to.
Right.
But if you're going to write to the, there's only 24 senators, it's one, goes to all of them. But certainly Senator Daniels and Senator Morse.
I spoke to Senator Daniels last night.
Yeah, would be the primary ones to, and maybe the chairman of the respective committee.
In fact, 309 has to get to the Finance Committee by March 8th, or it's not going to be dealt with. So it's a pretty fast turnaround.
Right, and the most recent status is that they still have it in the Energy Committee. They haven't even voted on it yet.
That's correct. Hasn't been presented yet.
Well, they
They have it.
They had a hearing back on the 23rd.
But that wasn't the committee. That was prior to that. That wasn't the Energy Committee.
Okay.
It was something, the only reason I know that, I spoke to Senator Daniels last night, and he helped me understand what the process was. That it had gone through is now when they, but there was nothing scheduled with the energy. But I think that's, again, thank you for answering.
So maybe that helps, maybe a letter helps light a fire under the Senate to
It's pros and cons, which is that I think we need to talk about.
I agree with you, Madam Chair.
But we should pick brains while we're here. Who knows what they're talking about?
Right.
Anything else you can offer in terms of advice? No?
It's always valuable if somebody, whether it's a town manager or somebody from the board, can go and make an appearance and speak at any of the public hearings.
Right.
It's much more impressive than just getting a letter.
Gotcha.
And gives the opportunity for the committee to ask you questions. Doesn't have to be lengthy. You have to understand you're going up there, the hearing's probably going to last in the Senate 15 minutes. And they want to hear you for 30 seconds or a minute.
Right, they're very shy, testimony. Peter?
Chris, if you're telling us that representative representation from somebody on this council would be helpful, and I certainly take your word as very credible, then could we get a notice of when there's a hearing? You know, maybe, I don't know if you want, if you could shoot us, I know you're busy, but, or if somebody could shoot us an email when the next hearings are? So maybe we could all talk about it and at least send a representative up to speak for us.
Right.
I've done it before, so.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking of the easiest way to do that, but I just, an email to Becky probably gets everything to
Yeah, I mean, if you wanted to send it to one person on the council.
Perfect, Becky would be perfect.
Yeah.
Or me.
Usually what happens, the calendar comes out on Thursday night for the following week. So there might be a hearing on Tuesday or Wednesday the following weeks. You really only got two or three days' notice.
Great, thank you very much, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Representative.
Okay, Highway Garage Project, any update on that? Here you go, Jackie.
The subcommittee met yesterday with still another solar outfitter to further understand the possibility of incorporating solar into the project. Although it doesn't appear feasible for the initial construction, our engineering team will design the project so that it will be able to accept the technology when it becomes financially viable. Turnstone, our construction management company, is working hard to secure pricing from subcontractors for the various aspects of the project. We hope to begin finalizing costs for certain aspects of the project in coming weeks. H.L. Turner continues to develop final plans to meet budget constraints and is working on securing appropriate permits for the site work.
Any questions from, any addition, Finley?
No, they must handle it. Right now, a lot of what's going on is tightening up the facilities to make it fit our budget, as Jackie said. And that, I learned that while there are odds and ends that would be very beneficial, some of these things have to be cut loose. So that's a big part of what's left, and that's happening.
We're all anxious to get things started. Okay, any other questions from anyone? No. Okay, comments from the press or public? I just want to be able, before we start, since I was sick last time, and I did watch you as I was lying in bed, but I fell asleep. You can start coming up. But I did fall asleep. So I didn't. But one of the things I did notice is that I just wanted to make a general statement, and I think I'm as guilty as anybody. Under the comments from the press and public, remember, it is designed to be a three-minute presentation. And it's not a time for the council to get into a debate. Okay? Clarification, questions, everything's fine. If in fact, it is something that should be longer, or there's something that should be debated, then let's put it on the agenda. And I'd be very happy to be responsive to that. Okay? So obviously, I'm not going to time it and say three minutes. But I want people to be able to go back to the original kind of format that we've done. Okay? Great. Okay, go right ahead. It's real bright.
Lorraine Allen, Citizens for Clean Water, 16 French Cory. I wanted to follow up on last time when Wendy presented her well results. And as she said, they're five miles away. So I don't know if anyone's following the data, on the one-stop data for DES. I can't deal with it at all. But in our group, we have a wonderful, wonderful woman who is phenomenal at it. So what she does is she
You have to have somebody.
Oh, and you know, she's close to retiring. And I'm like, you're doing all that on a phone? I'm in awe of her. So it's great. So she pulls the reports and the data and the memos that are going back. And then a lot of us read them and kind of talk about them and stuff. So I made just a little packet, and I thought I made eight, but I counted my own, so I have seven. I'm going to leave it with you, and I'll just briefly touch upon it. So what I thought I would do is, DES currently is doing a stormwater and surface water investigation. I've been following this at all. It's a combination of, last year, they tested the stormwater drain and they found amounts of chemicals. And they said, hey, we want you to do further testing. That's the short answer there. They also had had a lot of requests from people about the surface water in the river and what's going on with the river, which is a fast-moving river. So they did follow up on that. They did some testing on their own. And they asked St. Obane to go ahead and have their folks do some comprehensive wet conditions testing, is what they called it, because they tested the stormwater in dry conditions. So they've released that in, one of them is appendices of 378 pages, which my dear colleague here actually did read the whole thing at the beginning of the week and sent me a little briefing. I feel like I have an executive assistance. It's amazing. And then they had a 58 version, 58-page version, which is the report. So you can look that up if you like, and if you want the links. But what I did is I just copied a couple of pages of the data. Because I thought, you don't have time, I don't even, I can't even get the data, you know? Somebody gets it for me, which is great. Then I look at it. So I highlighted some things that I thought were interesting. So the conclusion, just to tell you, in this stormwater and surface water investigation, is Goldren Associates have prepared the report for St. Obane dated January 30th, 2018. And the conclusion there is, one of the things they're looking at is where is the water coming from? In the storm drain, in the surface water? Is it coming off of the roof? Is it coming from pipes? They looked underground, they did cameras through pipes. It's an astonishing piece, if you ever want to go on there and read that link, or if you want me to send it to you, if you can't deal with that site. So they determined that the PFAS concentrations in the stormwater and the surface water is a result of what they call groundwater infiltration. So that brings us back to those ground monitoring wells on their land, which DES referred to in the letter to Flatley, as some of you may have recalled from last time. And their concern about Flatley, I don't know if people know this, has not given DES permission to be on their land. They will not let them test anything. So you know, that land goes around St. Obane, and we all know what those parcels look like. So I appreciate that people made a motion to write that letter last time, because I think it's really important. So this report, what I did is I looked at it, and first you see all the Goobly Gop and all the names and all the acronyms that we're all getting to know so well. So what I thought I would do, just for kicks, is I thought about Wendy saying how she's five miles away and her well testing is under the St. Obane project. So that's where DES has categorized her. As opposed to, they have a DES general, you know, project, which is water testing, whatever they're doing with data points, they're very good with data points. And they have some under the MTB fund, which, and things like that. So, and some of the ones in Bedford were a mix of who they attributed the projects to in some of those neighborhoods. That's all on their one-stop, two, 278 pages of water testing. Very, very good stuff. So what I did here is I took Wendy's well. And I think when she gave you this copy, did she highlight the different categories of concern? So I made another copy of hers and I put it in the packet.
Yes, she did.
Yeah. So and I just put it there, just so you had it all together. So what I did is I took her results and I took those particular analytes. And, you know, we hear the phrase from the commissioner of DES talking about St. Obane's, what does he call it, signature stamp, signature blueprint. So I've talked with him about that, because my question is, well, how do you know? You know, chemicals are all over the place. So he's had lengthy discussions with me about this.
Combination of
Fascinating, really amazing.
Combination percentages and
Right. So Wendy, being an astute writer that she is, said to me, oh, if they started out just saying, you know, let's just test for MTB and check the other stuff, MTB was good, thank goodness, and it's under St. Obane project, buried in these numbers, would we consider this the St. Obane signature stamp? So I looked at it and I said, well, I have a lot of well results that people have sent me for whatever reason. Somebody has to do it, I guess. And I've looked at them all, and there is a pattern. So I'm not going to tell you definitively, because it's not what I definitively know. It's what I think. You know, what I think, what I think and what I feel, which I think is the way we all start in life, right? With the hypotheses. So I looked at the results from the storm drain, very similar proportionally to the Merrimack River surface water, which I have to say was astonishing. When I looked at some of those numbers, I was blown away by 7,600 parts, 2,200 parts. I'll give you this, that's a fast-moving river. You know, what we're told about what's been used, what hasn't been. Then we have the results for their ground monitoring wells. The 12 wells, I believe, on the property. So I highlighted on the surface water, the groundwater, Wendy's well results, and the storm drain, the same chemicals, which almost
Proportionally the same?
I'll let you, what I thought I would do is I would just touch upon it.
I'm not the scientist, but it would have to be
You know, I think we're all intrigued.
Because a footprint is proportional, okay.
Yes, yes. What I'm going to do is I'm not going to say that. I'm going to give you each this packet. And I've highlighted what you can call attention to. You can read it at your own, at your own leisure. Lovely bedtime reading. And I think, you know, giving accurate information, what I found in town is a lot of folks, when they look at facts, they're starting to say, and I don't say anything, I just say, read it, tell me what you think. Or if they ask a question, they're concluding, you know, similar things. So I think as a town, we have to watch this. Wendy took that final leap and said, in her opinion, the whole town was a super fun site, which kind of horrified me. And I'm like, what? It isn't technically. But we do know that the EPA last week suspended the Clean Water Act for two years. Our friends in Husick Falls advocated for a long time. Under the Kumo administration, the Attorney General's Office finally got behind them on a lot of this last year and really stepped up legally. Their Attorney General immediately filed suit about that, which was kind of astonishing. And just as another FYI, they're on their, starting their second round of blood testing, which is just a follow-up on blood testing. It's a pretty fiscally conservative area, you know, as we are here. And I don't know if you know that there was a bill looking to give Merrimack residents in particular, but other residents, access to blood tests. It did have a fiscal attached, because it needed to. But the majority of people in this town, we're not asking for a handout. We don't want taxpayers to pay for blood tests. A lot of people are willing to do that on their own, and insurance will cover it.
What was the number of that bill?
The number was one, I have it, I can send it to you.
Yeah, please do.
Seventeen ninety-nine.
Yeah. If you go on the New Hampshire
Was it a House bill or Senate bill?
House bill.
Seventeen ninety-nine?
Yes.
Because I was curious, asked you what the testimony was.
I don't know what the eight was, maybe seventeen ninety-nine, sounds almost like eighteen hundred in my strange brain lately, too many numbers. So if you go on New Hampshire, the Legis- Legiscan site, you can sign up for updates on all the bills. And then you get the calendar of dates and what's coming up to committee. So I just wanted to, you know, just give you a sense of, you know, what we're thinking. Because what I'm seeing is, what's in the storm drain is what's in the ground, which flowing to the storm drain, it's flowing into the river, it's in groundwater, it's made its way five miles away, and it looks like the same. There are more chemicals here than I've highlighted in this category, but the ones that seem to be in a lot of private wells. Public water, I've seen that big spreadsheet too, and, you know, they're all in there also. So I'll just, I'll just leave this with you to kind of look at, because I think we have to be informed. We have to start looking at the data, and we start to think about this as a community together. What does this data mean to us or town and our environment?
Peter?
Lorraine, I'm just curious, you guys have come in with a lot of information, and it's very helpful and stuff. But are you guys making any presentations to the MVD at all? Is anybody at their meetings talking to them?
There is some interesting things going on there. They've taken the stand, they are under negotiations, and they're taking the stand that DES is handling all of this. So we ask for information about water. It's very general. Jill usually answers questions very professionally, very cordially, refers to Leon Atwell refers to Leon Atwell in particular, who we already have a pretty good relationship with. So just FYI in our group, we have a massive mailing list. We have a lot of people in town that are, that are really following what we're doing. And really, our role is to pull the pieces together. For example, Monday at noon, four of us have a, their third meeting with DHHS, New Hampshire Medical Association. That was that great suggestion you made last fall, has agreed to meet with whoever's gonna be there. They extended it to several of us. We're going to that meeting in Concord. We've had a lot of conversations and emails with DES, DHHS in particular. And yes, we are looking at the whole issue of what we think about our water company. I've also had, in the last three weeks, a lot of folks in town come forward and have coffees with me in the morning who are in the remediation business, who live here in town, who are engineers, who have a lot to say. I met with a lot of guys who really know a lot about this. They've been impressed, I think, that I can have that conversation with them. I'm like, whatever, I've been, I've been reading and studying this. But they have a lot to say. So I want to know from them is what do you think? We understand this is very expensive. What would you like to see? How do you think it would be paid for and what would happen? And the other thing to keep in mind with this data is, I don't believe it's called a zone, but the whole property up there is in a, let's see if I get it right, groundwater aquifer and watershed protection district, not zone.
Most of the town is in a district.
Yeah. So this is in a protected district. When you look up the master plan on MVD of all their wells, they have a great description from two thousand and fourteen. It's on their website. And it talks about where the water source is for all these wells and the, you know, ecosystem and stuff. So what you see is wells four and five are in a groundwater aquifer-protected district. So I think of that and I say, wow, that's interesting. It also identifies in their master plan that those wells draw their water sources from the Merrimack River. Look at these numbers.
So does Pennecheck.
Yeah, yeah. So depending on the location. So, you know, look at the numbers and see what you think.
Thank you very much, Lorraine.
Just to clarify, I'm here for the colleagues.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Eileen sent out those links to us this afternoon.
Correct, I haven't seen it yet.
Okay.
I might have seen it, but I haven't accessed it.
I took a quick look at it this afternoon.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none. Recognitions, resignations, and retirements. The town council presented a certificate to Desiree Falt.
Who's not here.
Who's not here? Okay. Well, I'm going to read the certificate that she will be receiving. And if she comes in later, we can make a little exception. Planning Board, Best is here, but I'm not sure if you want to say. Do you want to make a statement before I read?
I can if you want, just really, he's not here, so.
I know. Well, I just read the certificate then. This is going to be presented to Desiree Falt in recognition of her service as a member of the planning board and recognition of your dedication and commitment to public service during your appointment as a member of the planning board. Your service and devotion to the planning board has had a valuable effect upon this community. We wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance of duty, July two thousand and twelve to February two thousand and eighteen. And I thank you for all your time and service to this community, Desiree. Thank you. Yes.
So I know she's not here, but I'd like to make a few words.
Please go, please do.
I've been working with Desiree as Bob for, for the number of years that she's been on the committee. And it was, it's sad to see her leave. She was a spark of life for the committee. She was also a trained architectural background influenced on the committee, which gave us a lot of opportunity to talk to people about things that those of us in electroengineering didn't know about. Or whatever, you know, we have issues with groundwater, we have issues with site plans. But, you know, architectural structures and stuff was also a great thing and a great asset for us. And Desiree will be sorely missed. And I'm sorry to see her move out of town and sad to accept her resignation.
Want to say anything? Go right ahead. Or Best, who's the chairperson of the planning board?
Thank you.
I think you're, I think you're all set.
So Bob Best, the chairman of the planning board, I thank you for the opportunity to lend my voice to the recognition of Desiree. Definitely been a spark of energy on the board and everywhere else that you encounter her. Volunteered for subcommittees to deal with sidewalks and all sorts of any other, anything else that we had going on, master plan and all the rest of that. Really an engaged board member with her architectural background. She was able to sort of spot things and identify some issues that weren't necessarily on the rest of us on our radar. And will be sorely missed. Hopefully someday she'll find her way back to Merrimack and we'll get her recruited on the board again. So I just want to echo all of the other recommendations.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Tom, for those words as well. Okay, next, appointments. Trustee of trust funds updated review. And this is why Chris Christensen is here for this. Chairman, Chris Christensen, town council to be presented with the details of performance update of the trustees of the trust funds. And you're not alone. Oh, I get to see that.
So I'm joined by fellow trustee Bill Wilks. And Jack Balcom's working tonight, so he sends his greetings, but sorry, he couldn't be here. So I have a little list of a few things that we talked to Paul McCauley about. Maybe we expanded it a little bit. But especially for the folks back home, let me just say that trustees of trust funds aren't really highly visible. There are three of us. We're elected each for three-year terms on a rotating basis. And we manage money for a couple of purposes. One is capital reserve funds for the town, the village district, school district. And the other is to manage what we refer to as permanent funds, which are bequests that are given to the town or the schools for various purposes. And some of them are to support the libraries, to support the schools. Shed Harris Fund, which supports fire protection in Reed's Ferry. We could talk about that at length. But that type of thing. And then, then of course, part of those permanent funds is perpetual care for cemetery graves. So I guess the other thing that I would say is we are by statute very much separated from the town council and the school board. Trustees are not allowed to be on the town council or the school board. They're not allowed to be a town or school district treasurer.
They want to make sure we have nothing to do with the money.
We try. So we're managing roughly sixteen million dollars. And we have paid advisors to help us with that. We used to do a lot of the stuff ourselves because we didn't have any fees. But when you, when you get into that level of money, you really can't manage it on a, on a one-hour meeting every week. So now I will say that a lot of it is in capital reserve funds and we don't have a lot of leeway in what we do there. It has to be government guaranteed funds, FDIC guaranteed, and so forth. And it's really a protection of capital as opposed to trying to manage and grow funds. Although we do make a little bit and we cover the fees. Some of you may remember, three years ago, I think it was, that we asked you to allow us to cover the fees out of income, which is actually something we had been doing for many, many years. But a new bill passed in the legislature that said we had to get Euro-K on it. And the reason for that was in some towns, the fees were being paid out of the general fund. That's pretty awkward, so that's why that went through. There was a restriction on that that said, if you went in that direction, you had to keep it that way for at least five years. You couldn't rescind your decision for five years. On the other end, you don't have to renew it. It's there until being rescinded. Currently, we're using Cambridge Trust as our manager. We went through a process first with the capital reserve funds of putting out an RFQ, request for qualifications. And we had a dozen or more businesses contact us. We whittled down through their presentations, had three or four interviews, and we ended up with Cambridge Trust. Several years later, we, about a year and a half ago now, we decided that we wanted to move the permanent funds from our previous advisor who had retired, from our previous advisor to somebody new. We went through the same process, had several interviews. And once again, Cambridge Trust came out on top. And they've been very, very good to us. The presentation or the graph and so forth that you have in your packet was prepared by them. They come to our meetings frequently. And it's not just one person showing up and holding hands. We had a personal banker, a fixed income person, somebody who manages equities mostly, and an account manager. And they're, they're just there for us when we need them. And they do a lot of stuff, filling out or filing annual reports and so forth. That's all included in the fee. When we were going through the interview process, we had one bank that said, yeah, we'll do that, but if you're gonna want us to fill out the paperwork, that's forty-five-hundred dollars. Cut them off pretty quick. So that works out pretty good. Add to it, sure.
Can I just add that, you know, one of the groups that we interviewed in the process was Fidelity. Obviously, Fidelity's in town, they're a big employer and so forth. But unfortunately, I mean, and we did have people come and speak to us from Fidelity. But unfortunately, they just didn't want to give us the attention that we felt was necessary. We get a lot more attention from, like Chris said, from Cambridge Trust. So I just wanted to mention that, because I know some people probably think, well, jeez, why didn't you talk to Fidelity? We did talk to Fidelity.
Okay. We weren't big enough.
I'm sorry?
We weren't big enough to be able to get the attention, you know?
We do have an investment policy. It's published on the town website of the trustees page. We review that every year and update it usually every August because we have to file state reports by September first. And I think that covers most of the issues that I had on the list. Only because it has come up in discussions about fire department, I did a little more research on the Shed Harris Fund. And the question always comes up, what do they mean in that fund by fire protection in the village of Reed's Ferry in the town of Merrimack? And it turns out that Addie Harris, Shed Harris, when she died, left her estate to the town for fire protection. And when they liquidated the estate, then they built a sixty-foot, two-hundred-thousand-gallon water storage tank on the end of Harris Road next to Charlie's Diner. Up that hill. That was in nineteen thirty-three or four that it was built and went into operation. And then in nineteen fifty-five, we formed the village district. They had their first office up there. Sometime later, that tank was declared obsolete and taken down. And so now we have a sum of money, like I say, for fire protection in Reed's Ferry. But we don't have a water tank to take care of, so it's kind of an open-ended thing. And we've been talking to Mike Corrigan about that on an informal basis. So just thought I'd bring that one up, it was kind of an odd story.
So right now, it's not accessible, but it probably will be?
I mean, we, we, we all looked over at the, we read the will. And we've had our attorney look at it. And the will is pretty specific about Reed's Ferry. Now, can you say that a piece of fire apparatus is used thirty percent of the time in Reed's Ferry? If you divided the town up, well, that's possibly an argument. And you could say, well, if you're gonna buy a piece of apparatus, it's three-hundred thousand for simple math, you know, you could give a hundred thousand dollars from that fund because it's gonna be used thirty percent of the town. That's, that's kind of gray and that's, that's what we're struggling with and we're trying to figure that out. I mean, otherwise, we have to do things that don't necessarily make sense, like put new windows in at the one next to, to Silo's, Homestead. Or do, you know, do things that don't really benefit the people of the town, but we would be spending the money in quote-unquote Reed's Ferry. So we're working on that.
Got you. Paul?
And that's what we're looking, that's why they're looking at this is because we're looking to renovate the Reed's Ferry Station. And prior trustees told us that we couldn't buy a truck unless we kept it just for Reed's Ferry. So we have a Reed's Ferry Station that serves Reed's Ferry. Can we renovate using this money? And that's where this is, the discussion has led to. So it's in the infancy stage. A lot of research right now, trying to figure out the ins and outs. And that's only one of many, many bequests that, which read through and trying to figure out what they really meant. Because one of them, I don't know which one, but the one with the school.
Not to take up the whole meeting because we could go a long time on all this subject. But there is another request that limits us to only giving money to schoolchildren that are through the grade of the eighth grade. So we struggle with that one too because obviously we have twelve grades in this, in this district now. And at the time, it was given that there was probably only eight. But, you know, that's the way the will reads.
It was a finishing school.
That's funny. Jackie and then Bill?
Can, are you enabled to give any amount of money that you three guys decide to something that you think would be beneficial? Do you ever have to come to the council or to Paul?
No. We're independent, as I mentioned earlier. Our guiding principle is whatever's in the particular bequest. So if you wanna, if we've got something for perpetual care and you want to fix the fence, if the bequest of the perpetual care doesn't have anything to do with the fence, you're on your own for the fence. And I mentioned that one because we do have a Griffin Fence Fund, which is specifically for fencing. So we really have to go by what the bequest says. We have some for the library and one of them says X number of the interest to be given each year for fiction, suitable fiction.
Interesting.
We don't, we don't discuss that too much. It's up to the library trustees to make the decision of what's suitable. But no, we don't come to you in that sense. But if the town council came to us and said, we've got a rough idea of what we'd like to do with the Reed's Ferry Fire Station. Do you think it fits? And I think we'd work together on it. We've done that with the school district. We've done three, well, we just finished the fourth library, three elementary schools and the upper elementary school. At roughly a hundred thousand dollars each, we've done one of those each year for the last four years. But they come to us and say, here's kind of what we're planning. We were able to find some money someplace to put in sound and video systems in, I think it was the Smith Gym, so that could be divided in half and used to double supersized classrooms. We don't have a lot of money specifically devoted to the town. So there's an opportunity for somebody, they want to leave some money to the town. Big opportunity here.
If the lottery winner is in Merrimack and comes forward.
Yeah, that's right.
She has to.
That's why they're not.
Exactly. Bill? Oh, I'm sorry, did you have a follow-up, Jackie?
Yes, please.
Please do.
Are the funds commingled at all? I see that they are for these purposes, but are they accounted for separately?
Yes. You get, you get a September report every year that outlines how much, or it doesn't outline it, it says it specifically, how much money there is for each of two hundred graves.
Okay.
Some will have a hundred bucks in the, in the tillie and some will have two thousand, depending on when they bought and how many graves and so forth. But it's very detailed accounting for each specific purpose. Now, for investment purposes, yes. The funds are jointly invested. And then on an Excel spreadsheet, you get, you know, we go out to four decimal places. And then on an Excel spreadsheet, you get, you know, we go out to four decimal places, how much you get for each one.
First of all, Bill, and then Peter.
Well, Bill alluded to what I was going to say that I'll make publicly. I just, you know, over the past couple of years, the town council's been working with the fire chief on staffing, equipment, infrastructure. We've talked about the south fire station and now potentially looking at a trust fund that's going to release funds for, at some particular point down the road, as it relates to Reed's Ferry. I just, you know, if and when that comes to bear, I would hope that it would be part of a larger conversation that this council's going to have regarding the future of the fire department as a whole. Trust me, I don't, I never want to begrudge looking a gift horse in the mouth, so to speak, but in the same token, I know that we've, we've had policy discussions over the last couple of years on the, on the direction of the fire department. So, I think if that does come to fruition, I think it's going to force us to have a larger strategic conversation from, from a physical plant perspective and probably an equipment perspective as well. So, that's, you know, like what I wanted to say. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Peter?
And this is kind of a curiosity question, maybe it refers to the council or to you guys, but you're here. And you would come to the council or you'd come to the fire department and say, "Look, we have this money freed up from Reed's Ferry, and we're willing to let you guys put it to use." But let's say the council didn't want to invest money in or do anything further with North Fire, the Reed's Ferry Fire Station. And I'm not saying that's the case, but this is a what-if. We don't necessarily have to take that money and do that, correct?
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out, Peter.
Okay.
To be honest with you, that's, the will is very specific, you know, to Reed's Ferry.
Yes.
But we're trying to figure out whether or not we could, you know, say that some piece of equipment or whatever the central fire does, ambulance, whatever is used for Reed's Ferry, so, you know, that's a great thing that we're trying to work through. And I mean, certainly, I can tell you that, on behalf of myself, that we're not going to throw money at Reed's Ferry if that's not practical and it's not going to be beneficial to the town.
And I guess, to me, it's just, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Paul was wanting to address.
Okay, go ahead.
The council, no money will be expended from the Reed's Ferry Fire Station Shed Harris Fund without council approval. The only way it can be expended is if the council approves it. It's just like any capital reserve we have. It will be a budgeted item, the council will be able to vet it. If the council doesn't want to do it, it won't get done. What we're trying to do is the fire chief is trying, like I said, in the infancy stage, figure out what this can be used for, so he can bring it to the council and say, "I have a need for 17,000 million feet of hose. Is that okay to be used out of this Shed Harris Fund?" If they come back and say yes, he'll make the proposal to the council, they'll come in as an appropriation request, offset by revenue. So, anything that will happen with that Shed Harris Fund, for example, would come in front of the council. Just like some, any, any request, except for our library that we have, which we don't have a lot of money, the capital reserve funds are approved through the budget. We spend them. Council approves it, we spend it. We ask the trustee of trust funds to reimburse us for what we spent out of those capital reserves. So, the council has every opportunity to say, "No, you're not going to do that." Similar to what we did when we looked at the gravel roads.
And just, and I'm not trying to voice an opinion for or against something. I'm trying to get an idea of what our jurisdiction is as the council with, with the trust fund. Okay, thank you.
Bill? Thank you, Madam Chair. Just out of morbid curiosity, how much is in the Shed Harris Fund?
I don't have it right in front of us.
I'm going to say roughly $600,000, of which $300,000 is expendable.
Okay, thank you.
We account for everything on a very strict principal interest. So, you can spend the interest, you can't touch the principal.
Principal, okay. Finley?
So, are you saying that $300,000 is, in fact, the return on your investments?
It's been accumulating for a long time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nice. Just don't put it in the stock market, okay?
It's 90% in the stock market.
Talk about, ouch.
We're making money hand over fist.
Good, I'm glad.
Yeah. One thing I, one thing that, you know, I could mention about that is that the equity investments that are, that are in the portfolios here are kind of targeted towards income. So, you know, if you get, you know, volatility in the stock market like we've had in the last week, the investments are with really good companies that have long histories of paying dividends. So, you know, we rely on the income and, you know, can't say with absolute, you know, certainty, but it does a good chance the income's safe, even if we have dips and doodles with the market.
You just have to go like this.
Right.
And not watch.
They shouldn't have to do that.
Oh, I, no, I'm talking personally.
Well, you have to think that by the nature of what we do on those permanent funds, it's a very long horizon.
Correct.
So, you know, something that happens on, you know, last week or next week or three years from now, our portfolio really isn't looking at that short-term type of stuff. We have holdings we've had for 20 years.
I, I mean, I heard this evening after the close of the market, and I can't make any promises, but they said the market is now back to where it was in November of 2017. I think all of us were pretty happy in November of 2017, so, you know.
It's just the difference.
Hopefully, it's a healthy thing, a healthy correction.
That's right. That's what I'm choosing to believe. Any other questions for Representative Chairman?
Okay. If you want us to go through the portfolio a little bit, we can do that, otherwise you have the sheets.
We, I think we have everything. Does anyone have a question about that or has a need to? Nope, you got out of that one. We appreciate very much you coming and updating us and educating us.
Do you have a website with this information on it, like with all the different funds?
You go to the town website, and we're under boards.
Mm-hmm, great. Thank you very much for all your.
And then there's 14 pages of spreadsheets.
So, if you want to take a look, Jackie, go right ahead.
Oh, just for the funds. It's kind of interesting to see.
Actually, what you've received in your package is very informative, and it, you know, it's a kind of a dashboard or a thousand-foot view, if you want to call it that or whatever.
Yeah, summary.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Share your time.
Thank you.
Okay, there is no public hearing. Do we have any legislative updates? Oh, you already did yours, Chris.
He said, "I have nothing."
In three minutes? Town manager's report, Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The planning board will be holding, will hold continued public hearings for both the Merrimack Park Place Mixed Use Development Site Plan, say that 10 times fast, and the site plan for the multifamily development on Executive Park Drive on February 20th. Also, the planning board will continue to work with the National Regional Planning Commission on the DW Highway Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan Project in March and April. If you'd allow me to go into a little off on this, but as you know, Eversource has been doing a lot of work in the town of Merrimack. And I just received literally at 6:00 tonight from our contact at Eversource, a little information that I think would, the community might want to hear, that they were in front of us, I believe, in May of 2017 with the vegetation maintenance program work, and that continues. They are working on the 3195 transmission line maintenance. The scope of work includes replacing existing wood transmission structures with new steel structures. The letter went out in December to landowners that abut what they'll be working on, and there, that 3195 transmission line is from Natta Cook Road to Old Kings Road. There's a little sliver that runs, that Eversource does own, that their poles are on. They're going to be replacing from pole 108 to 113. 113 is actually on the other side of Old Kings Highway, and that's, that's on town land. They'll be working with our Conservation Commission on that. But this project is slated to last until about June of 2018. They started earlier this week. The snow hit, they're going to go back in and do it. And basically, there is a, what they call the power outage is in March. So, they're hoping that the poles will be in place, they'll switch the lines over to the new poles. And they go into the steel structures instead of the wood structures because, number one for maintenance, number two for longevity, because the wood, the woodpeckers seem to like their old, even though there's hundreds of vaults running through the lines, they love pecking on those, those poles, so.
They get a jolt out of it.
They do. They get a big jolt out of it.
Ah.
All right.
It sounds like.
Also.
Every once in a while, I come to.
Also, on that same transmission line, you're going to see a helicopter flying, and there'll be a gentleman dangling from it. They are doing.
We're going to be getting calls.
You're going to be getting calls that somebody's jumping out of a helicopter. No, he's actually not jumping out of the helicopter, he is doing grounding work for lightning protection on that line. And that's the easiest way, because they're, they're such high-power lines, that the easiest way is for the gentleman to do it through a helicopter, because they can ground them a lot quicker than trying to climb the steel pole, ground it, go to the next steel pole. They can get more done if they hang, basically dangle out of the helicopter.
Oh, yeah.
They don't pay him enough.
Yeah.
Transmission line maintenance on the 380 transmission line, the upcoming maintenance line will take place mostly in Litchfield, although the structures just across the river is located in Merrimack. The scope includes installing staples and grounding rings and replacing hardware on existing structures. That work will be done on, on the ground. A grounding ring is about on the bottom of the pole, and basically, they run a wire up the pole, so that if it gets hit by lightning, the lightning goes down into the ground instead of shorting out the pole. And that's basically near Daniel Webster Highway to the Merrimack River. And once again, there'll be two, there'll be the helicopters, guys hanging out of helicopters, and people on the ground.
So, in general, there's a lot of Eversource work going on.
Right. And then the last one is the transmission line vegetation maintenance near, there's one that runs from Bedford through Mallard Point in that area, and that works, they started that work this week in Bedford. They expect three weeks they'll be in Merrimack. And basically, that is going and clearing there right away from, right away line to right away line, taking down all the trees, tree limbs, whatever is in there right away. So, there's a lot of work out here that Eversource is doing. If you see something, you can always call Town Manager Office at 424-1, 2331. I was going to give my home number. Thank you. 2331, and we'll have this up on our website for people to review. But there is a lot of work being done by Eversource, as well as ash splashes in town, trimming back trees on local roads as well. So, thank you.
Excellent. Okay, consent agenda. Consideration of changes to chapters of the Merrimack Town Code. Final reading. The town council to consider the acceptance of recommended changes to Chapter A198 Administrative Code of the Merrimack Town Code pursuant to Charter Article V.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Peter Albert. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? None?
Opposed.
Okay, one opposition. 6, 1, 0. Tom Koenig in opposition. Okay, old business, none new business. Now, just to make sure everyone understands this next, I purposely put on the new business. It's the town code. But we have finished amazingly the review and revision of the town code. We've done it on an individual basis for chapters, but we also have the final vote to accept it in toto. And this is what this is, the final acceptance of recommended changes to the chapters of the Merrimack Town Code, okay? The town council to consider the final acceptance of the recommended changes to the chapters of the Merrimack Town Code, and that's when it's due in five years, which is not part of the motion, it won't be me doing it.
So moved.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Thornton. Are there any discussions about this, comments? All set? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any in opposition? None? Okay, 7, 0, 0. And this is a good time, because Desiree just walked in. We should just have you watch the video. Well, I'm going to have you come up, and I'm going to read this to you.
See, now that you came late, you have to do the full round.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll take you.
Presented to Desiree Falk in recognition of your service as a member of the planning board, and recognition of your dedication and commitment to public service during your appointment as a member of the planning board. Your service and devotion to the planning board has had a valuable effect upon this community. We wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance of duty. Town Council, February, and your date of service is July 2012 to February 2018. And I thank you for your time and service. Now, you have to wait, because you want to have her watch, or do you want to say something?
No, go ahead.
You can wait until they speak, and then you can speak.
Yeah, you speak first, then, because I think I can say it all.
They said nice things, so they.
Probably won't do it as well as last time, but I just wanted, as the planning board chair, to lend my voice to the recognition because of all of the high energy and volunteering and the unique insight that comes from your architecture background. And just that you've always said yes to everything that we've ever asked for special work or extra research or whatever, whatever was involved, and it's been great, and we're going to miss you, and hopefully you move back to Merrimack and we get you back on the board soon.
Thank you.
John, did you want to repeat a little bit?
Well, there's not a whole lot I can repeat easily, because Bob and I said the same thing. But we really, having served with you for the number of years you've been on the planning board, it's been an amazing experience. You brought quite a spark to the planning board.
You said spark before, too.
Made it enjoyable, made it intellectually correct and valuable. As Bob said, your architectural background was very helpful to all of us engineers who don't have that level of capabilities. And we really are going to miss you, and sorry to see you go. And as Bob suggested, come back sometime, that'd be great.
We're building some apartments, so you. Yeah, yeah, come back. Yeah, yeah. I really appreciate it. I've had, I've had a lot of fun serving on the planning board and like learning a lot about kind of what goes on in the community. It's a really fun, albeit different, way to engage in it. So, I enjoyed that a lot. And, you know, the times when I brought my wig to some of the meetings, the Beehive or whatever, for, for fun. But it was, it was a lot of fun to get to know, like, everybody on the board, kind of fellowship with that, but also a lot of the people that came to the, to the town and presented, like a lot of the applicants and stuff, and getting to see their projects and how things work. So, I appreciate it. And if I come back to Merrimack, I'll come back on the board. So, thank you.
Thank you again.
Thanks, Senator.
On to the next. Letter of support of Senate Bill 309-FN, submitted by Councilor Bill Boyd. Town Council to consider writing a letter of support of Senate Bill 309-FN, an act relative to standards for PFOAs in drinking, camp water, ambient groundwater, and surface water. Bill, would you like to address here?
Yeah, I mean, not to belabor some of the conversation we had previously, but the, the whole purpose for why I put this on the agenda was for the town council to let our voices be heard to not just Senator Daniels, but the rest of the New Hampshire Senate, along with our legislative delegation here in Merrimack regarding, at least how I feel, about establishing certain criteria as it relates to quality drinking water, ambient groundwater quality, and obviously surface water quality. And I think, you know, some of the issues that we've dealt with throughout, throughout the last couple of years, not just specifically as it relates to PFOAs. the last couple of years, not just specifically as it relates to PFOAs, but also, um, going back to 2012, when we were introduced to the potential problems we were gonna have with our MS4 stormwater permit. I think, from our perspective, Merrimack has been, I hate to use this word, but I think we've been uniquely impacted by some of the challenges that are being presented as it relates to, to water in our community. So, I felt, uh, having learned about this bill, I thought it presented a unique opportunity for the town council to potentially lend its support, uh, for this, for this piece of legislation. So, I was putting this on the agenda to ask that the town manager be tasked with writing a letter of support of Senate Bill 309, and that the town council endorse it in concert. Thank you.
Peter?
You know, and I, I agree with Bill, um, and I, but, you know, we heard Representative Christianson tonight talking about, um, HB 485, um, and I, I don't think by supporting, I think supporting both of them, and supporting anything that's gonna protect our groundwater and add better, um, support for protecting it and monitoring it, I think is important for this council to endorse. So, I mean, I would, I would support endorsing this, and I would support, if needed, endorsing 485, and then let our legislators come to an agreement up there. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I have some thoughts. I gave everybody a chance, now it's my turn.
Deep thoughts by Chairman Harris.
Okay, when I read, when I read it, it was a three-page, uh, Senate bill, and I had some questions, because to me, it was a little open-ended. Uh, and yet, it had specifics related to time issues. For example, from 120 days from the effective date of this section, there has to be, uh, initiate adoption of a maximum containment limit for PFOAS, PFOA. Um, that's not that long.
No, it isn't. I agree with you.
Okay, and then, once a, um, determination is made, rulemaking has to be done within 60 days of making the determination, okay? So, there were some things where it's specific. Also, it had to do with the financial, in fact, uh, it had just come out of the financial, no, no, not financial. It was, it's gonna be going into the financial, uh, committee, and has to be there by March 8th. So, I had a lot of questions, so I called up Senator Daniels. He had not seen it yet, but we ended up looking through the testimony and stuff, 'cause I wanted to get a sense. Um, here are some issues that I have some concerns with. And I think the testimony, there was, again, three in favor, and that was Dan Ennis, who is actually one of the supporters, Representative Masmer, which is also one of the supporters, which are fine, I think they have, um, they are very active, and have been, and will continue to be active, they're Seacoast people as well.
I agree.
And the Director of the Conservation Law Foundation, and they were all in support. Against, or in opposition, was Vice President of the Public Policy, Business, and Industry, and to be honest with you, it's industry, so I take that with a grain of salt. I'll just, you know. To me, they're biased, I'm sorry, but that's, that's okay. But so would other people be, so I would take it with a grain of salt. However, the next two had to do, uh, the Government Finance Advisor for the New Hampshire Municipal Association, and DES. Now, the, the issues related to DES is they were supportive of HB 485 and HB 1101. And as I mentioned, I tried to compare the two. 309 does not address air emissions, where...
485 does.
Four, 111 does.
I thought 485 had...
And he mentioned that he thought 485 did as well.
Right.
And remember, 485 is the one who asked for the toxicologist, as well as the human health risk assessor. 309 asked for the toxicologist, but not the human health assessor. Um, although, I mean, it could be debated that if you're looking at surface water, you're looking at the results of air emission contamination.
Correct.
But that's not what we want. We want the contamination to be caught at the, at the site, which is what we wrote in September, we wrote a letter of support for House Bill 463.
Yep.
And that was related to air emissions, okay?
Right.
So, I guess, I guess I'm, let me go to other things here. Now, the municipal association, which is another thing, as a municipality, we have to consider this. There is great financial uncertainty related to the cost related to any, um, it's, okay, the, not only the setting standards, which is not an issue, but based upon that, there'll have to be remediation. It's not clear who has to do the remediation, it just says that we'll have to. And that's the not spoken to part of 309. And that's what the municipal association is. Uh, it could be significant and cost millions of dollars, and there should be a risk-benefit analysis related to any municipality that approves this. Again, it's up to you guys, I'm just bringing it up as to information that's there. Limited local resources may not be able to keep up with these proposed standards, and there is a prohibition of unfunded mandates in the state constitution. So, one of the debates was, was this going to be found unconstitutional if, in fact, which, we don't have to worry about it, will be found unconstitutional, that's what's gonna happen. But, um, if, in fact, you are going to make a municipality potentially responsible for remediation, the state's not gonna, where are the funds coming from? It's considered an unfunded mandate. Bill?
Several months ago, I testified with Deputy Director Twala on a Senate bill as it related to the MS4 stormwater permit, and seeking to have DES assume responsibility of that particular permit. Uh, the chairman of the committee was Jeff Bradley, and one of the questions that he asked was specifically the Constitu, the constitutional, which is actually Article 8, and whether or not, whether or not the municipality would waive their rights under, under Article 8. And I testified at the time, I said, I can't speak for the council, but I can speak for myself, that I'd have no problem waiving Article 8, because the cost involved of having DES clean up our stormwater was far cheaper than having the EPA, you know, put in onerous, the onerous MS4 permit, where it's thousands and thousands of dollars with, with no particular end in sight. So, hearing what you're communicating to me from what the NHMA is saying, it sounds like to me that they're seeing a conflict as it relates to, at least, it would be my interpretation, that a conflict with Article 8 would exist, so therefore, the question becomes, if this were to be enacted, would there be language in there that would require municipalities to quote-unquote waive Article 8 in order for, for, in order for this to apply to a particular municipality?
Right.
So, that would be my educated guess.
The DES also mentioned, um, okay, the two positions, uh, surface water, I didn't know this, the EPA does not have its own standard for surface water at this moment. That's what it says here by DES. Uh, SB 309 also goes further in looking to establish a standard for surface water. If SB 309 passed, New Hampshire would be the first state in the country to have its own surface water quality standard, which may not be bad, and would need approval from the EPA. The EPA does not have its own standard for surface water at the present time.
That's, that's odd, considering they got standards for stormwater, but they don't have standards for, for surface water.
Right.
It's kinda self-defeating.
Okay. So, I guess my, so, I guess my, uh, request is that we not support 309, but do support 485 and 1101. Pete?
And Nancy, hearing what you had to say, it makes a lot of sense. Maybe if we do decide to send a letter, um, we say, not, not just say we, we would prefer to support 485, but say, express our concerns of what's been cited with the weaknesses in 309, and maybe, and, and, you know, maybe that puts our, our, citing that, maybe that means something to them, and maybe it doesn't, but Chris Christianson mentioned earlier that apparently it does mean something, especially when we show up at hearings. So, uh, you know, uh, having heard you, uh, talk about these issues, maybe that's the way to go, then.
I mean, I think, part of the thing is testimonial, you only hear one side for a certain number of times. I'm sure, I'm sure that there are some responses to those issues regarding municipalities. There may be a legitimate response. I guess I don't have enough information to make a determination. I feel comfortable with 485 and 1101, because that's very specific, DES is, uh, trying to push for it, it's much further along in the pipeline, especially 485. But, I'm not sure what other people...
The, the flaw with 309, I, you know, I agree with you regarding the timeframe. You know, right now, based on the reports I see with the MVD, you know, they're under 70, they're under 70 parts portrayed. They're, they're, they're meeting quote-unquote the...
The standard.
The standard, okay? So, let, let's, let's presume this goes through, signed by the governor, DES does their due diligence in four months, and decides that 40 is unacceptable...
But it has to be based upon criteria.
I understand.
And four months is not long enough to be able to do that.
And I, and I, and I, upon review, I, that's...
Go ahead. I'm, I'm hearing voices over here.
Okay. I agree with you. I, I'm, I, I'm trying, you know, we've, we've, we've been talking about this issue now...
For two years.
For two years.
Yep.
And the authors of the legislation expect DES to come up with a set of criteria for a specific standard in, in four months. I think that's, I think, you know, in, in retrospect...
I mean, the argument could be said they should be looking at research for two years.
And I would agree with you, I mean...
That's an argument.
I, I, it's an argument, and I, and I agree with you. I guess, the, the thing is, is that I think Merrimack can, the Merr, the, the, at least I wanna believe, my opinion is, you know, if you were to get, get your set of criteria, I think this community could absorb it financially. I think you have other communities that if they're forced, you know, that, that have their own, um, whether, whether their water is managed through a specific district, or it's managed through the town, it's something they've never had to deal with, now automatically, they are now forced to deal with something. I mean, I kinda have a little, a little, a little bit of sympathy for those particular communities that might not be financially positioned to absorb, to absorb that kind of expectation that is being asked, uh, in, in 309. So, I, I would agree with you, that I think 101, 1101 and 485, you know, voicing our support for those particular bills, I think they're stronger. But I also think it allows for, for more of a time period for other municipalities to quote-unquote, you know, if they're impacted by this, it allows them to begin whatever, whatever strategic financial plan they need to do to, to absorb that particular piece.
What I meant to ask, and I forgot, the Drinking Water and Groundwater Trust Fund, the state has that, and he's involved with that, right? Aren't you involved with that, too?
I mean, with the Drinking Water and Groundwater Commission, which is the...
Which is part of the trust fund.
Part of the MTPE trust fund, actually, we are the MBTE trust fund.
Okay. So, again, that needs to be explored as well, and that may be an avenue...
So, like, one of the, one of the things, the criteria that we're working on at the commission, and I think I alluded to this in the last meeting, and if I didn't, I, I do apologize, but in the March meeting, we are expected, the commission is expected to receive what I would term a, a set of rules by which the commission governs itself, and by which it's able to, you know, review, accept, decide upon applications from specific municipalities that are looking to either improve their infrastructure, remediate, um, water quality in their, in their specific wells. One of the things that I've asked them to consider as part of the loan process is to include the ability for a municipality to receive either a loan or a grant to explore four wells that they might not have the financial wherewithal right now to do.
Isn't MVD getting some money?
So, well, MVD is getting money as it relates to the Turkey Hill, to the Turkey Hill well.
Okay.
I mean, uh, the holding tank up there, they gotta, we approved a two-point, 2.8 million dollar grant, I think is what we approved for improvements...
Pump station.
To that, to that pump station, thank you. And it's just, it's, has nothing to do with filtration, has everything to do with, with, you know, upgrading the, uh, the infrastructure of that particular pump station. But with the council, several months ago, before Council Albert and Council Thornton were on here, as we actually approved the purchase of property off of Clara Drive that went into Conservation, and Conservation was working with MVD, considered Butts, Babusick Brook, and they were looking at that as, as an additional, uh, potential aquifer or well, wellsite source for the MVD. And we're lucky that, you know, this community has the, has the financial wherewithal to do that. I'd like to see that kind of, um, monies be available to other communities that might not have the financial wherewithal to do that, but they know they, they may have potential groundwater sources, or potential well sources, be able to come to the commission and be able to, to apply for funding through the commission. So, that's an additional thing that I've advocated to be included as a part of the, part of the rules. But we will be voting on that, uh...
So, we don't have...
March, I think it's either March 13th or March 15th, that'll be, that'll be brought to our commission for approval, so...
So, we don't have a motion?
There's no motion, I wanted to have the confer, I just wanted to have the conversation...
But I would like to make a motion, that we send a letter of support related to, um, 485 and 11, House Bill 1101.
1101, I'll second that.
Because it serves the same purpose.
I agree.
In fact, it's more extensive, because it covers air emissions, and it does cover those two positions, which are, I think of both. So, question? Oh, Paul, go ahead.
Support to the Senate, the full Senate?
House bill, it's House bill.
But they passed the House.
Oh, yeah.
So, we going to the Senate now?
That's correct.
With Senator Daniels? Do you want it to the whole Senate?
So, the...
Why don't we find out the appropriate place it should be sent?
Point of order, man, sure?
Go ahead.
I, we should direct the le, letter directly to our senator, which is Gary Daniels, and we can carbon copy the Senate president. And I would also carbon copy Senator Kevin Avar, who chairs the Energy and Natural, Natural Resources Committee, which I believe is going to have jurisdiction over that bill.
Yeah, in fact, he was one of the sponsors of 309.
He was one of the sponsors of 309, that's correct.
Right. And it's funny, I was talking to Senator Daniels, he said it's very often, because I talked to him about 485, and he went, "Well, yeah, I'm not as familiar with that." But again, they're working on their bill, and that's why I wanted to talk to Chris. House bill is doing their bill.
Right.
And it's like, they don't communicate until it comes down to whatever. Okay, any other discussion? I don't have a second.
Yeah, Bill's second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bill Boyd. Any, yes, Tom?
I, I just have a couple of questions, I guess. I have, I, I don't, I'm not familiar with Article 8, and I don't know what you were talking about when you started speaking about waiving rights of Article 8, and not waiving rights of Article 8, and things of that nature. Um, and as you brought up cost to municipalities, and how you thought Merrimack could cover the cost, I think if we're gonna ever vote on anything, it would be nice if you could share what those expectations might be with the council, so we're all voting with a little bit more knowledge.
And I have no idea what those expectations are, counsel.
I don't either, so I'm not about to say we can cover them, if I haven't got a clue what we're talking about.
Right.
I, there are a lot of things, especially with the MS4 and things like that, where it went into the millions of dollars, like the town of Merrimack could end up having the take.
Right, and we've talked about those particular costs, and, and I hear you.
And so, I, I guess I was losing favor with supporting 309, um, it, it, just in that overall discussion that's going on. But I really don't have a position on the others, other than what's been talked about here in this evening, so I...
Would you prefer that we wait, so that you'd have more time to consider it? I'd be okay with that.
I, I don't, I don't think it's gonna make a big enough difference. I think it's appropriate for us to support whatever we can, as far as water contamination issues is concerned, but, uh, when people start talking about cost factors...
Right.
We just need to be very careful.
Which is what, which is what the previous ones were not addressing that. In 485, and 1101, their financial, there's no statement regarding the consequences, and there's pros and cons about that. But it doesn't commit to consequences, it just will set the limits.
We'll deal with it.
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Where, 309 does? Any other questions?
I think, I'm not sure, but I think Council Boyd meant Article 28A. Um, if he was talking about unfunded mandates...
That's correct.
It's Article 28A.
I apologize.
And waiving Article 28A would do what?
Make us have to pay for something that could turn out to be an MS4 situation.
Oh, good, okay.
That's what I, that's the way I saw it.
That's, that, that was what Senator, I apologize, 28A, thank you, Council Rothaus. You know, if we don't waive 28A, then, you know, we don't have to pay for it. I mean, that's the whole point, you know, are you willing to waive that part? If you are, great, if you're not, well, it's, that's a different conversation.
Constitution, shouldn't we do anything?
Yep.
Okay, are we ready for a vote?
Just, uh...
Yes, Pete?
I, I take it that once this letter's been put together by the town manager...
I, I take it that once this letter's been put together by the town manager, we'll take a look at it just for a final
That's fine.
Sure.
Absolutely. We'll try to get that for the next meeting. Anything else? We'll probably use a, a similar template as we did with the, the other one.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Seven zero zero. Excellent. Okay, HVAC presentation. Town council will be presented with the system option for the East Wing first floor HVAC project, and we all received a handout. And Kyle Fox is here to help explain, or how do you want to do this, Paul?
Um, I'd like to pass the baton.
Yes, Billy.
Is this staple packet the same that was in my
Yes, um, just so you know, the staple packet is the full report that we got from our consultant. This, what, rep, why he's recommending, basically talks about everything. The scope, what he looked at. And then in their packet, you got the two cost estimates, which are the back part of that packet. And so the, 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 excuse me, Tom. This packet right here is the precursor for those last two pages.
Okay.
And Kyle will be talking about most of that tonight. And we've been busy. Actually, I shouldn't have used the word we. I should say Kyle's been busy.
Did you, were you able to look into that situation we talked about?
Yeah, yes, we looked at that. We talked about that. Um, we've been busy with Eversource, and I don't just say we've been busy with Eversource, and Kyle will fill you in on where we stand with that. But we are looking at a lot of different angles. We are looking, we've been talking to the person who put this study together. There's other, other experts in the field that we've also, Kyle's had made contact with. And he'll be discussing that in his presentation. For everybody who hasn't followed the budget presentations, in the budget, this eighteen nineteen budget, the town manager had requested replacement of the PTAC units. The PTAC units are, as she said, the air conditioning and heating from those cheap motels that you would go over and either go up or down with, with the thermostat. Some of them have caught fire in, in town hall, and we were fortunate enough that they didn't spread to catch the building on fire. But they, they did catch fire. A couple others are out of commission because they weren't working properly and malfunctioned. It's taking a long time to get the replacements, in-kind replacement. They can get a smaller unit for us, which will handle some of our needs, but not all the needs. It'll be able to handle the heating need or, or the cooling need. But it won't be able to handle both. And we've been replacing some of the units that, the two units that caught on fire with smaller units just because we didn't want a gaping hole in the wall for winter season. And the total cost of the project is, uh, which was put into the budget, uh, with council vote of two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars with the caveat that we'd come before the council tonight to fill you in on the total project. And with that, I'm going to pass the baton to Kyle for him to take it from there.
Thank you, Paul.
Go right ahead, Ken.
Good evening, Madam Chair, town councillors. As, as Paul indicated, I'm here to follow up on our previous discussion about the HVAC replacement project for the first floor of the East Wing Town Hall. What was in your packet, and I gave you an additional copy tonight in case anyone didn't print it out, is the study that we had commissioned from HL Turner back in, uh, they started this study in November. I believe we received the, this report about December first of, of two thousand seventeen. And basically what the report goes through is it, it inventoried all of the systems in the east wing of the town hall from all three floors. Indicated where each of the systems was lacking, and then provided two options for going forward. Particularly with the first floor where the PTAC units are. There's seventeen PTAC units or PTACs on the first floor. Option one that, that was provided by the consultant was to continue the model that we have today, which is to continue, continue replacing the PTAC units. Option two was to provide a new, a completely new centralized system, which involved air handling units with variable air volume system. They then provided two cost estimates, which you can find on pages six and seven of the report. The cost estimate for option one, which is continuing with the PTACs for engineering and installation, complete package cost of a hundred and forty thousand. Option two, which was the centralized system, was two hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred dollars. The, um, the report goes on to talk about life cycle costs for each of the two options. And that's where, where this gets really interesting and, and where we would, we have been proposing option two is that the, um, because the centralized system operates so much more efficiently and uses much less energy, and its lifespan is more than double the PTACs.
We're still using gas, right?
That both of them would use, utilize natural gas.
Okay.
Because of the efficiencies in, in the duration of the life of the, the products over the PTACs and the energy savings long-term, um, there's an eight-year payback for option two versus option one. Even though the cost is quite a bit more, um, in the long run, it, it's a better investment for the town. I did talk to our consultant this week to, to kind of follow up with a little more detail on, on what, what exactly he was proposing. So the system he's proposing does two things. The first thing it does isn't related to heating or cooling, it's related to air ventilation. He noted, he noted on all three floors of the, the east wing of the town hall, there's no outside air being introduced other than what's being brought in when the doors open and close. Any new system that we put in is going to require by code to have a system that, that introduces outside air. In, in this, the proposal they gave, that he gave us, would additionally provide that ventilated air to the basement level as well. So that would, that, that's an addition that wouldn't be required by code. But since they're doing it for the first floor, it would make sense to do it for both floors.
Now, the first floor, the ground floor, has a s- a heating system and AC unit system now, right?
Correct. So, yeah, so the fir-, what I call the first floor, which is where the town manager's office is and assessor's office, that's the, the floor with the PTAC units. The basement where public works and community development are. Uh, we have three, um, single, uh, forced hot air furnaces with, um, the coolings provided through the same duct system with the outside, um, air conditioning compressors.
Now, do they have out-
Typical of what you'd see in a residential.
Do they have outside air access down there?
We don't.
Ah, okay. All right.
So the other part of this is, um, what, what the, the consultant was trying to, to provide in, in his proposal was to equate the new system to what we have today as far as controllability. The one good thing with the PTACs is that each office space can control their own temperature. There's no centralized thermostat. Everyone can control their own space. So this variable air volume system would allow for the same thing. Each space could, could, uh, control their own temperature, and that's what he was trying to do. It's a higher-end system. There's of course additional cost to being able to do that. I did discuss with him this week, what if we did a, what if we treated it as three zones? Meaning, you know, kind of simply looking at it as the assessing area, town clerk area, and the town manager office area. He said that could certainly be done. It'd be similar units to what we have in the basement, the forced hot air units. And he did say there'd be significant savings doing that. In particular, if you look at the spreadsheet on page seven, it would be the lines starting with VAV heating coils for twelve thousand dollars. And then the next three below it as well, boiler, heating piping, and the pumps. For a total savings about two, of about forty thousand dollars. Should those four, um, things be taken out of it and go to a more conventional forced hot air system. In the meantime, while that, that discussion was, was taking place, and, and I should say, Steve, our consultant, was willing to come here tonight and talk with us, but unfortunately, he's in epping at their deliberative session, so. Discussing similarities. So i- in the meantime, I've been, uh, trying to make contact with both Liberty Utilities, which is our gas provider, and with Eversource to talk about incentives and rebate programs that might be available for this kind of system. Unfortunately, I've not been able to get a return call from Liberty, so I've not heard from them yet. I did make a great contact with Eversource. And I spoke with Ann, who came to our building committee meeting. And, um, she offered up to take a look at the proposal right away. And, and she did that, and she enlisted a colleague to help her. It's a fairly complicated system that, that's specified in here. So she asked if I would mind if she sent it to a consultant for review, for an energy audit review essentially, that Eversource would pick up the costs through their energy audit program.
Gee.
So of course, I said,
Gee.
Yes, please.
Let's think about that.
Let's think about that, yes.
Right. So I made, I, I talked to, to Doug Waite, um, from Design Day Mechanicals earlier today. And he's actually going to come to town hall Monday, and we're going to do a review of the spaces on Monday to begin that process. In addition, he threw out a recommendation that while he's here, if Eversource would pay for a, an entire building envelope review, they'd certainly be willing to do that. Obviously, they get paid for the work, so there's incentive for him. So he's sent a request to Ann as well to see if, if that would be authorized. And of course, if it was, we would take them up on that as well. So that, that's kind of where we stand now. Obviously, we're in full support of doing something, but doing it the right way. And I know at the, the, at the final budget meeting last week, the budget was increased to, to cover the two forty.
Right.
And I guess, for now, I would propose that we leave it there. And what we could do is, once we have more information, similar to the sidewalk project that we just did last year, we would come to the council, show you what the results are, and get approval to move forward with whatever project makes sense. And then that way you, you would have control of how much money ultimately is spent on the project.
Did, go ahead, Finley, go ahead.
Kyle, just for clarity for me, the VAV slash heating coils boiler and heating piping, those forty-two thousand or so dollars you said would come out, is that the, the component, the brains that allow individual spaces to run their own temperatures?
Right, because what, what that system would be, it would be a hot water system. Uh, where, and that's how each room would have their own control. Because they could control how much hot water is going through their individual pipes.
It'd be hot water, not air.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
So this proposal was for a hot water system. Talking to Doug today, he also said that they put a, a, um, a, a different style hot water system in a hotel in Whitefield, I forget the name of the hotel, but, um, so he would look at that system as well. So apparently there are good economics with water systems, because now we have two different folks suggesting that. So I think once we get through the process and, and look at at least three different options with these folks, I think we'll have a really great recommendation to bring back to you.
And then the other thing, I, I will never go to the PTAC units, so, so my question is just to understand. Those units, I, I recognize they want to run outside air into the facility with this if we were to do the option one, but I'm looking at the units. Each of those units is thirty-five hundred, thirty-four, over thirty-four hundred dollars each?
The PTACs?
Yes.
Yes.
I just can't comprehend that. It's, uh, I mean, I, I don't know why it would be. It's, I don't know, I'm assuming they're about a fifteen thousand BTU air machine.
I was going to say, why is it that much? You could get a, a wall.
Well, it has, it has a heat tube, though, so I get that there's two components.
Right.
When I just did the simple division, I was, I was surprised at that, so.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I guess, uh, my final question is, uh, it gets a longer lifespan, a double lifespan anyhow, and, um, the next, for replacement, what, what components kind of would I be looking at to replace those things that would go bad? The duct work won't be bad.
Correct.
I'm sure the, if we use the pipe, the water, that would be much longer before that would eventually go bad. And so
Furnace the same thing.
What are the large costs? I guess the condensers and whatever.
Right, it, it would just be the furnace or the boiler, typical to any system. Once you have the piping in place or the duct work, depending which style you go with. The labor to install those is really the big part of the cost, because you're taking down ceilings, you're
Right.
You're, you know, that, that's really where the labor is. Beyond that, the replacements would be presumably in the range of what, what you see on residential stuff.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Bill, and then Peter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kyle, I'm not a plumber. Um, so.
But he stayed at Holiday Inn Express.
You stole my line.
Sorry. And they had PTACs, I'm sure, so.
Is there any downside to having hot water used to provide heat?
We're going to find out, aren't we?
Yeah, I, I am far from an expert in HVAC, um, so I, I can't really give you a, a
Is, is the water recycled, or does it come in, go through and get flushed out?
No, it, it's a, it would be a recycled water system.
Okay, so if there was a leak, it's only going to leak what, what actually goes into the system, correct? Whatever number gallons goes into the system.
You don't need to separate hot water.
Systems are designed to, so if you do, use a little water, they fill automatically.
Right.
If you leave water on the floor, I sus-
I suspect it would continue to flow unless there's an emergency shut-off when it recognizes a severe drop in pressure.
Paul?
Having a forced hot water system in my house, and live with one for, since I've been born.
And not having stayed at a Holiday Inn Express.
Not having stayed in a Holiday Inn Express. And with the foss- forced hot water system, it's a loop. So the water comes in, boiler heats it up, zone turns on saying, "Heat, please." Simplified, simplified, please. Goes through, heats the water up, runs through the pipe, runs through the duct work, comes back down, and returns back in the boiler. There's some evapor- evaporation with heating the water.
Yeah, I get that.
Water comes in, fills it up again. There's a water and heat, and the water temperature is, um, is there, and there's a, a sensor. There's also an overflow. If one of the lines goes, like it freezes and breaks, you could have severe water damage. Because it's there. And, and if, if the system's calling for heat, it's going to go through and look at it, but it's a, it's a closed-loop system.
For heating?
For heating.
Peter, and then Jackie. Oh, you, you weren't done, Bill, I'm sorry.
I had a follow-up.
No, go ahead.
Kyle, can you pre, as it relates to option two, can you talk to me a little bit about the, the funding that says general conditions, construction contingency, and then bidding contingency, and then owner's legal advertising project admin? Can you tell me how all of that is factored into the final price?
Sure. So what, what I had requested, um, from HL Turner was a budgetary figure. And when they do budgetary figures, they put, um, their, their kind of standard escalation costs to, to cover the unknowns. General conditions, um, and, and construction contingency, kind of, kind of go hand in hand.
Well, what does that, I, I, what does that mean to, to the laborers?
So, so general conditions is, once you, once you open up the ceiling and start figuring out exactly what you need to do, you know, is there, is there a load-bearing wall that you have to cut through?
Is there asbestos that we have to mitigate?
That could be a good example. So those kind of unknown things, you know, he, when, when Steve came, he stuck his head up in, you know, thirty different places in the drop ceiling. But you can't see everything when you're doing that. So it's to cover those kind of unknowns.
Okay.
Um, and then in the bottom side, which is the ancillary cost, that's all your different engineering costs, um, that, that, that come into play.
Well, what's the ele- what, uh, explain to me the eleven grand for the bidding contingency? Well, what's the ele- what, uh, explain to me the eleven grand for the bidding contingency?
I'm, I can't speak exactly to what that is. My guess is, it's to cover, um, if bids come in high, but, but I can't say for sure. I can, I can get that answer for you. I'm sorry?
Would that be the unseen variables that you were just talking about?
Well, it's the same kind of thing, with the complexion.
My, my guess would be that it's simply a, a, a fudge factor for, you know, we, we don't know when this is gonna happen, you know, what, you know, six months from now, what is pricing gonna be?
Okay, okay. Adam, Madam Chair.
Sure, thank you.
Pete, go ahead, Pete.
Um, this, I, I, first of all, I wanna say, this is very helpful in, in, in coming to a decision, um, the, you know, um, for, for this, this high-cost item. Um, and I guess I, I just wanna say, uh, well, I'm concerned, one, are we under any time constraints budget-wise to get through this and get, get this, uh, item decided upon? Um, and the other thing is, and, and going forward, and Paul had mentioned this, and if Eileen were here, I'd mention it to her, is that when we have an item, a big-ticket item such as this, we should have this presentation.
That's right.
Right then and there.
Which was our issue.
And, and not ferret it out later, and that, I'm not trying to, I'm just thinking for the future process or anything that comes up, we should have this presentation, um, so we can, we're not all standing here scratching our heads and asking a million questions you may not have an answer to. And the other thing I would ask is that, and I've noticed a couple presentations coming forward, they're, this, I believe people at home might wanna know some of these things, and this should be maybe on the screen as a, as a PowerPoint, 'cause people hear us, but they wanna follow along, and they, sometimes I think they like something to read. So when we have presentations like this or anything, I think part of that presentation should be on the, on the screen. Um, and that just being said, and I'd ask that, it, maybe this could be posted on the website, so people understand, who's ever listening, they'll see some of the details of this as well.
All good points, all very good points.
And that's all, just, just for the sake of the presentation.
Just for your initial response, I think that's what all of our concerns were, that we're not gonna vote on this. We had a contingency, right now, it's in the budget, right? So we don't have to do anything with it.
Yeah.
But I think we all expressed concern at that point, saying, and I remember saying, "I don't like having to do this."
And, and I just don't, you know, and I don't wanna go forward any, on other projects, 'cause I think my knee-jerk reaction going forward will be, I don't wanna hear it until I have a presentation, so. That's all, I just wanted to voice that, and then going forward, hopefully speed up the process, thank you.
Point taken. Well taken, very good. Jackie?
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments. I, I lived for many, many years with both kinds of systems, uh, not the motel type.
But air versus water?
Yeah, air, and water, and the water, uh, to me, is, is really a go-to thing. And I think the only excuse to put air in is the cost, you know, less cost perhaps, because the water is best, better on allergies, and it's, um, very smooth. You get that up to temp and you don't worry about it, and it's quick. Uh, but air, you know, comes on, goes off, comes on, goes off. That's...
We could have a debate back and forth. Quick question. The A C unit on hot water, don't you still need to have ducts?
Yes.
Oh, no.
I don't believe so, no.
Yeah, yeah, A C.
I couldn't speak intelligently as to why, um, but, but talking with Steve.
So how does, all right, so I, I'm gonna have to do my own.
It's separate.
It's separate, it's not the same furnace that you use to heat. It's a separate system to A C. It's sorta like, it's a separate furnace or a heat pump or something?
I think it's even a separate furnace.
I, I will get that answer for you.
'Cause I'd like to be able to compare the cost of forced hot air versus the oil. And I, did we, uh, did we, did you talk about the ceiling part?
Yeah, we, we did talk about it, and I think part of the process is, is that what Kyle said earlier about bringing the fresh air in, that's why we located in the basement, because if we had to bring the fresh air in upstairs, we could still bring the fresh air in. But we'd have to go, we'd have to get through all the way down to...
Do you do a se- what we're talking about?
Is this regarding putting it into the attic?
Yes, yes.
Yes, and the reason, just to be able to update everyone, when we were setting up the agenda for this, uh, Finley and I were with Paul, and we're setting the agenda, and this came up, and I basically said, well, you have this whole configuration you're going through, why don't you come from the ceiling? You've got the third floor that you use for nothing except for the, um...
Uh, storage.
For Chuck, and storage.
And not much storage.
And not much storage, 'cause you really can't accommodate much storage 'cause of the load-bearing and stuff. So wouldn't it be a lot cheaper to put the furnaces up there, and you could have air vents coming from the ceiling? You don't need to go down. Now, that doesn't take care of the air downstairs, but you can hose in air downstairs. You don't have to come from the third floor all the way down to the ground. So I had asked, that had not been considered.
So it, it had been?
Oh, Paul didn't know that.
And, um, so I, I can, I can speak a little bit to it.
At the time, yes.
You, you've taken a little air out of my sail, from here, from one of your points.
Speaking of air.
Right, so the...
That's two.
That's two, I, I don't know what a rule...
When, when Paul and I discussed this, um, my, my thinking was, the, the discussion point was, why not put it in the crawl space area where the, the other units are that, that does the air conditioning for the memorial room, um, there, and, and the heat for the attic space? Um, there was a couple of reasons why that wouldn't be a great option. One is, it's very, very tight in there. Uh, there's a narrow walkway, uh, between the joists that, that has the, the mechanical furnaces now, uh, very difficult to get in there. Two, uh, we experienced with the really, really cold temperatures we had earlier this winter, um, even with the furnaces running full-time that, that heats the attic space, we couldn't get that attic space to heat above fifty-nine degrees, because even though the, the ductwork is, is fully, um, insulated, just, it was so cold in that attic space, because the, the roof is not insulated, it's meant to be a cold space. And it, with the extreme colds we had earlier this winter, the furnace and the, the ductwork was not able to heat up warm enough to, to get it into that room.
How cold did it get up there?
Down to about, it was in the low fifties.
Which is a great place to put a furnace.
Well, so, so that, that's why you, you took some, some wind out of my sail.
Even more.
Is that I hadn't considered putting it into that storage space area. Uh, we could certainly look at that.
Not me, it's but my storage, right.
Um, I did, I did have that discussion with Steve, and the analogy he drew, however, is, it's always better to have your heat coming from the floor, if you have the option, your heat from the floor, and your cooling from the ceiling. Um, the, the point he drew was that in, in this region, we spend six to, or eight to nine months of the year, heating, and only a couple months cooling. So it makes sense to do it from the floor versus the ceiling.
But it involves, but it would involve a lot more construction to do it from the floor.
Maybe.
Maybe, okay. But is that gonna be something you're gonna look at, though?
We can definitely look at that.
Got a question?
Just, yes, Tom?
So you have, so we have seventeen P-TAC units, and I'm not against P-TAC units, 'cause I stay at Holiday Inns and stuff like that, so I'm really not, just saying. Um, but you have seventeen, but we only have three that are broken.
Currently.
Okay, so you just did the apples-to-apples comparison. I, I'm, I'm just not in a favor of putting a quid, you know, quarter of a million dollars in the one floor. That's just, I don't, I mean, I value, I see the life cost and how in twenty-five years it's gonna be, save money. My dollar is valuable today to me, not in twenty-five years. Um, so I wouldn't be in, I mean, I wasn't in favor of putting the two-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand dollars in it in the first place, but, you know, I would see three P-TAC units is, I think, is what we need right now. Um, so, I mean, I'd be more in the favor of going that way, just because of the va- the value of the dollar. And I don't think we need to spend that money. It's supposed to be, just put a lot of money in the budget with the police and everything, and other things that when the town needed, um, I, I just, I wouldn't be in favor of spending that, that's all.
Understood.
Bill, did you wanna say something?
No.
No? I think that's, responding to you, Tom, I, I concur with you. Uh, on the same vent, I do understand Finley's issue related to, you could do the three, but you still have the overall issue, but two forty is too much, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, I'm leaning toward the three-zone thing, so people are gonna live with it. You know, let's get this down, what, what are those things that we can decrease to be able to bring it down to a more reasonable? 'Cause two forty, to me, is unreasonable, but, but I felt that we had to at least set the money there, and then we could do the arguing later, which is what we're doing now.
No, right, right.
Finley?
Well, I, I understand the tight dollar, but for me, it is a more long-term thing, because I just look at electric costs between the two types of units, and I've got three thousand dollars for, um, for option two with the two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar potential investment, and then I see thirteen thousand dollar electric cost, annual cost on option one. And right out of the gate, that's big money savings right, right there, so I, well, I can appreciate it, I, I, uh, unless it, you know, unless there's something jumps out as to why it's not worth it, it only makes sense to do this to me, so. But I'm, I'd really like to see the more, you know, more specific thoughts on, on how we'll go about it. 'Cause upstairs, I'm thinking, sorry about that, that I recognize the, um, you know, it's better to heat from below, but up in that attic, not the cold attic area, but the third floor, it, putting it in those rooms up there, seems to me, it would be a much simpler process.
It was divine inspiration, wasn't it?
Yeah, and, and that's what I would think, so I would like to see the comparison of the two, um, that's it.
Peter?
I, I guess, I, uh, there's a, there's a part of me that's hung up on, this is only one floor. And, you know, and I've run through my mind, okay, I like the savings, the eight-year payback. Is there any way to look at the future, 'cause, I mean, we've got two other floors there now. Are we gonna be revisiting the, the bottom floor or the top floor in two years from now? And so should we be preparing to look at, I mean, and I don't know if they can do it, uh, but, you know, maybe we should begin to start the design for the plumbing of the venting system, or whatever we use, hot water or, or forced air, or whatever it is, um, for the entire building, the future of it. Um, even if it's not gonna heat that, or cool, heat or cool the entire building, it just seems to me that we're, are we gonna revisit and now say, well, now we need a, we need bigger units to finish the floor, the top, the top floor and the bottom floor?
We gotta think of that.
So that, that, those are some concerns, as much as I like what I'm hearing about the energy savings and so forth, so. I, I mean, I'd like to hear a little bit more about that, you know, when we come back to, so.
Yeah, yeah. Tom?
Thanks, I was trying to avoid getting back into this subject, but, uh, I, I'm certainly in the same ballpark that Finley's in, not wanting to spend a nickel to support future expansion of the P-TAC program, uh, P-TAC units. Um, while they might be great in a hotel room, uh, where you're not having a meeting or a conversation or something like that with, with a multitude of people, it might be with one or two, um, I've been through fifteen years or more of meetings in these rooms where you can't even communicate when those things are on, um, and, and we're having to shut them off, and then the room gets hot or it gets cold if the discussion goes more than about thirty minutes, uh, depending upon the outside temperatures and stuff like that. And we have conference rooms that are used by other people, so I'm not just talking about town council meetings, uh, or the town manager meeting with their staff or something like that. I mean, these, these rooms are used by a lot of people, and I think that, uh, what we've been asked to focus on here is the fact that on the first floor, there are these P-TAC units, they are dangerous in that we've seen two or three of them catch fire, um, we've had problems with them for many, many years in being able to utilize them in public spaces, uh, and I think it's appropriate for us, before we think of spending any more money on another one of those units, to put in a, a better, more reasonable unit. Um, and I'm all with you, Nancy, on going with the cheaper three-zone system, I have no problem with that. I mean, I've lived, like Jackie, with both hot water systems and forced hot air systems. I love ho- uh, hot water systems, they're very good, um, but if that presents its own issue with how do you cool it? Do we put in a, a vented system anyway in order to cool, then, you know, let's just go with what's, uh, efficient and, and functional, uh, and, and makes those rooms better usable by all the people involved. So I definitely would support this program going forward. If we leave it at two forty-one like it is now, and can realize some savings from a reduced program of, uh, three zones instead of individual zones, that's great. Um, I'm all for it. If we can, uh, realize savings from energy, from Eversource or Liberty Utilities, that's even better still. Throw it all in, I mean, we'll probably get down below two hundred thousand. Compared to the hundred-and-forty thousand to replace those units that are in there now, I, I think it's a, I think it's a bargain, and, uh...
They're doing a lot of reimbursement, not reimbursement, incentives, rebates for, uh, private, so maybe they'll be doing that for...
Well, I suspect they will.
Yeah. Jackie?
And I sus- I, I agree one-hundred percent with what Tom just said, and Nancy, um, everybody. The payback might be more excessive than, than the eight-year, because I'm not sure how much they factored in purchasing new, um, what are they?
Energy-efficient.
The, um, those new motel units, um, which are gonna be very costly if we start having to replace them too. And, and we'll be, um, you know, really criticizing ourselves for putting ourselves in a bad, a bad situation financially, if we do have to start replacing those too.
That, that is factored in, so in, in the, the, uh, the payback analysis, there's two, um, installations of the P-TACs.
Yeah, okay, that they were very fair about, yeah.
Built into the equation.
Yeah.
Because they're less than half the life of the other system, so that was factored in.
So I think the consensus of the group is that I think the majority are leaning toward doing the, the newer system, but also consensus also that we have to find a very cost-efficient way to do that. And part of our, at least my vote, would be the effect, the cost of effectiveness of the different systems. 'Cause I don't like two fifty for one floor.
I don't either.
And I think we have to reflect that.
Right.
You know?
And, and I, as, as I told Steve when I was discussing the, the three-zone system versus the total control system, uh, there's a couple factors in my mind. Um, we live in the basement with three zones just fine. Um, the, the I T area is, is a big problem down there, because they generate so much heat, they're always running the air conditioning, uh, so that kinda throws a kink into the basement. But otherwise, everything runs fine, to, to Counselor Albert's point. Uh, we have no intention of changing the basement system. It works good, there, there's no need to, to change anything, it's just upkeep what, what we have. Um, sorta lost my train of thought there, so. Uh, oh, so my second point, uh, to Steve was, we do have an energy policy in the town, so having everybody with their own controls can work against the energy policy. So, um, having more standard controls with the programmable thermostats, um, can actually help to, to, to work towards the energy policy, and, and one of the discussions we had is whether, um, we could have, you know, a more smart system, where say, Paul and myself would have, you know, an app access to the controllers.
Turn it down, yeah.
Uh, we could see on the weekend if somebody left their heat on, and, and make those adjustments, so.
Pete?
Kyle, so that, the I T area, it's a heat, it's too hot down there?
Yeah, because of all of the computer equipment.
What's amazing, and the reason I bring it up is amazing, is, is the years it was a police station, that cell area always seemed very cool, and where Chuck's office is was the evidence area, and it always seemed, you know, cold back there, you know?
I, I sit on the other side of that concrete wall, and, and it's like a heat sink for, for my office.
I don't doubt what you're saying, I just...
Uh, so it's...
It has different uses.
So it's an interesting, uh, problem, you know?
Well, it's all in your perception, too.
Twenty feet away, Chuck is roasting, and...
Yeah, just, yeah.
Those cells are still cold. The cells are still cold, it's just all the equipment that's warming him up.
The cells are still there, too.
Yeah, the cells are still there, and the kitchen's freezing on that side, and...
If you'd like the stainless steel fixtures, you're welcome to come and get them.
That was Chuck's office, right?
Chris Conway at C E J Computers doesn't run heat, he uses his, I guess, servers and everything, takes that heat from his basement levels.
And uses it?
Yep, I, I, he told me he didn't have a heat bill.
I believe that.
But he has a good electric bill.
He's got an electric bill, yeah. But he's gonna, he has that heat anyhow, so he analyzes it.
Right. Well, even, you know, we're talking about different zoning, and we have this one room where we have to debate on whether it's too hot, it's too cold.
Yeah.
So even... So even the individual...
Right.
Rooms, we have more than one person, you get into debates.
Right.
Okay, any other questions? So we'll be interested in hearing back from you.
Great, and we hope to do it as soon as we can, and...
Excellent.
Um, we look forward to it.
Very good, thank you very much, Kyle.
Kyle, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, minutes, January eighteenth.
Madam Chair, move the town council meeting minutes of Thursday, January eighteen, two thousand and eighteen, as presented.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Thornton. Any changes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Seven, zero, zero.
Madam Chair, I would move the town council meeting minutes of Thursday, January twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, as presented.
I believe that's the one I was saying. Hold on here, hold on a second. Yeah, it was, okay. Uh, motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Thornton. Did you do that already? I'm sorry.
Yeah, when you were asking me to delay.
Sorry. Any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, seven, zero, zero. Comments from the press, which there are none, comments from the public, seeing none, counsel from the council, seeing comments, did I say counsel again? Wow, oh, I will take in a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Thornton, all those in favor say aye.